LPS Board of Education, special work session to order on today's date is December 13th, 2016. April, will you call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Here.
Mr. Schulte?
Present.
In the back of the room, the Open Meetings Act is posted. And next, we will begin the 10-year Facilities and Infrastructure Plan, and I'd like to turn this over to Dr. Standish? No, Lanny Boswell, please.
Thank you, Connie. Today's work session, staff will present an updated version of the 10-year Facility and Infrastructure Plan. The 10-year plan is a document that is continuously updated to reflect new needs, to reflect projects that we've completed. And at this time, I would like to thank Dr. Standish, thank Scott, and the entire team at Operations for hours and hours of work that have gone to bring us up to this point. The Planning Committee, where I served with Matt and Barb, has spent the last several months reviewing enrollment trends, projections, demographics, the city's 2040 Comp Plan, and countless documents. All Board members have met with staff in small group meetings and participated in city growth tours. There'll be a lot of information presented to us tonight, but note that this is the beginning of the conversation. It's an introduction of the needs. We plan to have at least one more work session, possibly two, this spring before we're ready to make a final approval on this plan. Today's work session, then, is more about questions than answers, and that's good at this point. We hope that the questions that you already have will be joined by questions inspired by the information you received today, and we hope that you will share those questions with me, with Liz, and with Scott. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Standish and get us started.
I think in the interest of time, I think Mr. Boswell did a great job with introductions, and we're happy to bring this forward to you tonight, and we'll dive right in. I think we're gonna walk through some information, receive feedback. This is a pretty open exchange of dialogue, and much work yet ahead of us on all of this.
All right. Good afternoon. Couple of thank-yous. Thank you for this opportunity. As Lanny mentioned, there's been a lot of time and effort put forth in this plan. Thank you in hindsight for all of your support. Many of you who've been on the Board a long time, this has been a process that's not just been originated in the last 12 months, but we've been doing this since 2005. And so, I think it's served the district well, it's served the Board well, it's served our community well, and so, thanks to all of those components of this, it's been a very productive and a very useful tool for us as we continue to move forward. And tonight, ahead of time, also, thank you for your input, because as Lanny also mentioned, we want questions so that we can come back with additional information and answers to help you address those questions publicly. So, also, as mentioned, this is an introduction only. There are a lot of things that probably aren't on the plan that might need to be. There may be things on the plan that shouldn't be, and we'll have discussions about all of those throughout the night and in future discussions. If and when adopted, this will actually be the sixth plan that you as a Board would have adopted. First one being adopted in 2005, just prior to the 2006 bond issue. The only last thing before I get started, a couple of thank-yous. I have a team of my colleagues sitting behind me. Kevin Elms, Wayne Smith, Tim Losky, Gordon Hartle, and Brian DeCulci, who all work in Operations, who are an integral part of this, along with many others who aren't here. And I also want to recognize David Carey, who's the Director of Planning for Lincoln and Lancaster County. And so, we work alongside a lot of city staff to make sure that the information that we make decisions on is based on good, sound decisions that Planning is working with in terms of the city and the county and growth and those types of things. So, this is not just an internal LPS staff recommendation of what needs to be done. We spend a lot of time with outside groups who also have their thumb on the pulse of what's going on in and around our community for growth. So, that all being said, I also want to thank Dr. Standish. She's very supportive in what we do. Dr. Joel, and many of the other departments within the district who support all the decisions that we make in moving forward. So, that being said, you have a packet in front of you, because we're gonna kind of reference that packet. One is a document that just is a summary, and I'm gonna address some of the bullet points on this summary here shortly. Another is a slide that's within the slideshow that is titled Influential Factors, and we'll talk about them in a little bit, because those are really the highlights of how decisions were made to put projects on the 10-year Facilities and Infrastructure Plan. And then you have four 11-by-17 documents that are part of the plan. One of them that has information on the front and back is the most up-to-date approved 10-year plan. And so, this was actually adopted in December of 2013. It's more of a reference for you than anything, and I want to make a little note about that. At the bottom of that last approved, the list of needs totaled around 350 million. So, just remember that number, because the bond issue in 2014 was about 153 million, and we had an additional $10 million roughly of Build America Bonds and other funds, so we took care of about 160-plus million dollars' worth of needs. If you look at the old plan of 350, that meant there were still 190 million dollars' worth of needs that we didn't even touch from a funding source. So, just as a reference, remember that as we move forward. You have another document that was approved in July that took savings from the current bond issue and applied it to projects that were unfunded, that were currently in design on. And so, we adopted or approved this Phase Four. I think there was about 14.5 million dollars worth of projects that we moved forward on. That's what this document is. It's really like an amendment to the 2013 approved plan, okay? And then the last two pages that you have, and we'll spend more time on those here shortly, are the 10-year Facilities and 10-year Infrastructure Plans that we are proposing to move forward with. And so, those are probably the two that you'll want to have in front of you the most here in the near future, as we start to talk about specific projects. So, as we move forward, a couple of things that relate to city. And you're looking at a photograph of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. This is Lincoln and Lancaster County. North is to the top. This basically focuses on Lincoln, but it does include parts of the county in and around Lincoln. And this plan is currently being updated with some minor amendments that I believe will be approved in the next couple of weeks, if I'm not mistaken. So, this was approved in 2013. And so, kind of the yellow area within the inner part of it is the current city, and the areas that are cross-hatched, or pink, or burgundy are future areas that the city intends to invest in infrastructure. And when I say invest in infrastructure, that's water, sewer, streets, and those types of things. And so, that really is a guide for us in terms of where we want to pay attention in terms of where rooftops are gonna start springing up, which means that's where we need to build schools. We don't want to do the reverse and just go build a school out in the middle of a section and assume that the houses will come, because they may not be able to get infrastructure to those locations. So, we pay close attention to this plan. We work very closely with many of the city departments, not only David and the Planning Group, but we work with Public Works, Traffic, Parks and Rec, a number of city organizations to make sure that the decisions we make and the direction we go pays close attention to this plan. And you can see it's a 25-year plan. So, that being said, this is a, looks like a, I don't know what it looks like. I think I asked the question one time, what country is that? And it's actually a watershed within Lancaster County. And it dictates how water and streams and watershed management flows, to streams and from small streams to larger streams, and larger streams to the bigger rivers. And no different way. The Platte River, the Platte River runs to the Missouri River, and the Missouri River runs to the Gulf of Mexico. That's how sewer flows, and that's how the city invests in infrastructure, based on flow, gravity flow. And so, this is a watershed that encompasses Lincoln, and when you look at this map that's on the screen now, the red lines are existing wastewater trunk lines or mains within the city. And so, they can only expand so far until they get to the top of the hill, and then all of a sudden, you're within another watershed management area, and no longer can that drainage flow downhill based on the trunk lines. And so, this is what really dictates the Comprehensive Plan. And so, as much as this is getting kind of down into the weeds, this is really what dictates how the 2040 Comp Plan continues to develop over the time, and it really helps dictate on how we develop and master plan future schools. So, the document you see now looks just like the one we looked at a couple of slides ago. It is actually different. The Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department is going to make some amendments to the last plan, and they are gonna bring some areas into the more higher tiers or priority areas for development to take place. They're going to invest in infrastructure sooner than thought in some parts of town. And two of those parts are in East Lincoln and Southwest Lincoln. And so, they've expanded those cross-hatched and dark purple areas, or burgundy areas, which will accelerate growth in a couple of additional parts of town. Again, we pay close attention to this, because one square mile, 640 acres, that's about 1,800 to 1,900 rooftops. And it only takes about 3,000 to 3,500 rooftops to create a new elementary school. So, that's how quickly those numbers can add up, and all of a sudden, we need to be prepared to have or be positioned for a new elementary school. So, this is soon to be approved by City Council and Lancaster County Commissioners. This is a map that you've probably seen a number of times over the last few years, and those little blue dots are what we call kind of hotspots of growth. And you all took a tour in the last 60 days around the city of Lincoln, and we drove through many of those areas, and lots of homes were under construction. The two kind of red dots are areas that will be now brought into that updated Comprehensive Plan. And so, that is two more so-called hotspots that we want to add to our map, because we're gonna start to see homes going up there in the next few years. So, this has been a useful tool, and I think it's very helpful when you take your tours to kind of see where growth continues within our city. The next map here, the kind of peach or pink areas are actually undeveloped sites that Lincoln Public Schools owns. So, as we continue to talk about future school locations, those are possibilities that we could locate a school, or it could be a parcel of land that we could trade, or swap, or relocate within a development to acquire the appropriate site for a future school. I thought this would just be helpful information for you to have in front of you. So, before we get into the plan, I want to go back to this little summary sheet that I handed out, which was just kind of bullet points. We talked about referencing the last plan that was approved in 2013. We also talked about the one that was adopted in this July of the updates of the savings applied to four new projects, Belmont, Lincoln High, Northeast, and the Science Focus Program. As we get into the new plan, we're gonna start talking about the things that influenced why projects fell on the list. And the very first one, which is probably the most important, is enrollment growth. And the number on the screen, 4,450, we've talked about this before, that's the last Friday number cumulative over the last five years, 4,450 students. If we even stayed at that trend, we're gonna have a tough time keeping up with seats in our schools. We know we're gonna have some overcrowding. We know we're gonna talk about portables. We know we're gonna talk about future schools and/or additions. We're gonna have a lot of questions that we're gonna need to answer, and a lot of good planning to make sure that we accommodate that future growth. But that's a significant number, and I think you'll see that the plan addresses enrollment growth the most. We'll talk about that. Program deficiencies. We analyzed every building to make sure that we were meeting the needs of all programs within every building. And as you know, there are core facilities that support all of our programs, like media centers, library media centers, lunchrooms, those types of things, and they need to be able to support a building that we expand. So, we analyzed all the core facilities, along with all of the programs within every building. And we're gonna talk about early childhood later on. We have that in 29 facilities. And so, what does that mean in terms of space within our buildings? We're gonna talk about changes in curriculum and curriculum delivery and technology, and how that has impacted programs within our schools, and what that means to the 10-year plan. We're gonna talk about safety and security. And I think the last bond issue, we did a really good job in investing in technology, secure entrances, cameras at high schools, a lot of safety and security measures that we believe have brought Lincoln Public up to a position we need to be. That doesn't mean we're done, but we'll talk about safety and security, and how that impacts most decisions that we make regarding facilities. We'll talk about sustainable practices. And I know Lincoln Public Schools has done a great job for 20-plus years. You know, we started with recycling, but then we invested in geothermal ground source heat pumps. In 1995, we opened the first buildings. We're probably a leader in the industry in the educational field nationwide. And that's a story that we don't tell very often, but we're a leader there. I think we're a leader in composting food waste, a new program that we've initiated the last couple of years. I think we're a leader in construction waste management, where many of our projects are taking in excess of 75% of the waste from a construction project to a recycling location in lieu of the landfill. So, we're a leader in sustainable practices, let alone energy conservation. I think those are all things that Lincoln Public should be proud of. And the last one on that influential factors is protecting our investment, and that's gonna be one that we'll reinforce here in a little while, because we have a lot of money invested in facilities, you, our taxpayers, our community, and we take great pride and great care in taking care of those facilities. And we all know what it's like to fall behind. If your home has an old furnace, or air conditioner, or the roof is bad, and it's starting to get to be 20 and 25 years old, you know the stress that it puts on you, knowing that they're not working as effectively or efficiently as they should. Lincoln Public has done a great job with the support of our community to make sure that we're protecting our investment, and we're investing in good economical, very feasible types of systems and products within our facilities. So, I go back to those numbers, and then we'll start to dive into the plan. The 2013 plan, 350 million. So, don't let the new plan number shock you, because again, there are 16 projects on the old plan that just moved to this plan. That's about 150 million dollars' worth of work that didn't get addressed, didn't get funded. It's still important, it's still a priority that was on the 2013 plan, that we move forward to the 2016 or 2017 plan, whenever it's adopted. We have six new facilities on this plan that serve pre-K through 8th grade that total 164 million dollars. That's just to deal with growth. That's four elementaries and two middle schools, and that doesn't even bring into discussion the high school, okay? So, 164 million of new facilities, that's elementary and middle school type facilities, six new buildings. There is a cost for a traditional high school on this plan, and there was a cost for a traditional high school on the last plan, just so that we know what that looks like, what that costs. And that traditional high school is based on a program just like the last two that we built, North Star and Southwest, just like those two in terms of square footage, the programs that it would offer, yet the cost continues to go up. So, just so you know that, that's on the plan. And then we've listed some projects of note. We're assuming that you're probably gonna ask questions about many of the projects. It may be hard to talk about every project tonight, but I think there's some there of note that would probably catch your attention more than others, and we would hope that you would ask questions about that. And the last comment I'll make about, on the bullet points, is none of these projects are funded, other than the Tier One group, which we adopted in July. All the rest of these are just projects, projects that we believe, from a staff perspective and from input from you, that belong on this list. And there are a lot of projects that aren't on this list, because we believe that they may be projects that we can absorb annually, within general fund dollars, within operations dollars, that aren't large projects, but ones that we believe we can absorb and still keep up the pace with the work that needs to be done. So, with that, I don't know if anyone has a question that they'd like to ask now, because I think we will dive into the plan, both facilities and infrastructure. Any questions?
Okay, before we start questions, I'm just gonna ask everyone to keep your questions brief, because we do have a school board meeting at 6:00. Okay, I don't know, Kathy, I guess you're first.
This is just a general question, and I don't need to answer now, but I would like to have a program capacity and regular capacity at existing buildings, as we're talking about adding a lot of new buildings. It would be really helpful to know what space is available within the buildings we currently have.
Okay, we'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Barb?
Thank you.
I think it, Annie.
Annie?
Mine's super quick. Could you repeat how many new rooftops in 640 acres, and how many make a new elementary school?
We kind of use the rule of three houses per acre, which is very close to what's common in today's world, if you would talk to planning. 640 acres in a square mile, I know you lose part of that with streets, but 640 times three is 1,920 rooftops.
Okay.
And we would traditionally look at 3,000 to 3,500 rooftops to support an elementary school, and that is looking at an elementary being a four-section, which has been similar to the last two that we've built, okay? So, we could expand that footprint if we were to go to a five or a six-section elementary, just so you know that. Did that help?
Thank you. Barb?
I just wanted clarification. Tier One is not included in the total at the bottom, then?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, or can we go on? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, we'll start with the Facilities Plan, which has four tiers. By no means should we believe that the tiers represent priority, even though you will see that Tier Two probably references growth more than anything. And so, if we were to look at all of the influential factors, we would probably believe growth probably has the most impact right now, just due to the number on the screen. We know that that's putting pressure on us. So, Tier Two really does accommodate growth. However, the first two projects on there, Everton Park Middle School, are both IAQs, indoor air quality projects. And the district took a very aggressive approach at indoor air quality projects back in the late 90s, early 2000s. In the 2006 bond issue, we actually took on about 40-plus buildings with indoor air quality over the course of that bond issue. We had schools at that time that weren't air-conditioned. We had schools at that time that were not sprinkled with fire sprinkler systems. We had outdated fire alarm systems. So, a lot of things needed to be updated, and we did a great job in 2006, and then even the following 2014 bond issue. But these two buildings are in good shape regarding code. Don't get me wrong, they're not ground source heat pump, but they do need an update, and they're getting old in terms of their infrastructure. They're 20-plus years old in infrastructure, and so, they rose to the top of that list and need to be done. And that's why we put them on Tier Two, because that's coming from staff, knowing the time and effort and the dollars it takes to maintain those buildings. So, I'll come back and talk about IAQs in a little bit, because I think there's a good story to tell behind that. The next two sections there that talk about new pre-K five elementary schools, four-section, and new 6-8 middle schools, we're recommending a new elementary basically in every quadrant of the city, even though it references Southeast, South. That one "South" is probably South, Southwest, but about every quadrant of our city has growth, and we're recommending an elementary school in every one of those. And that would be a minimum recommendation today, because by the time we sort this out and we follow growth the next couple of years, we may recommend five, depending on where those rooftops land and how quickly the city grows. But I think this is a minimum to keep up with the growth that we're witnessing today. The middle school grouping is two middle schools. We know that the new Moore Middle School soon to open really relieved overpopulation and crowding at Lux, but we didn't really solve the problem at Scott. And we know, based on growth in South Lincoln, that another middle school in South Lincoln would also help Scott, but also accommodate the additional growth in South Lincoln. So, one middle school we would recommend would be South, and another one would be in Northeast Lincoln. And we believe that there's a need out there, based on growth, in Stevens Creek and east of 84th Street. And we've also had preliminary discussions with the YMCA, who really likes our collaboration and partnership, not only at Fallbrook Y Sco Middle School, the soon to open Moore Middle School and Coppel Family Y. They're already interested in a third joint venture, if we were interested, and likely in Northeast Lincoln. That would be one of those, or the other middle school. The line under middle schools that talks about existing middle school programs. Technology and curriculum continue to change and develop in a lot of our specials, and quite frankly, they're changing in all aspects of curriculum, but in special classrooms that need more than a marker board or projector, where there's special equipment, special circumstances, things are changing because of technology. And we believe that those areas of our facilities, and you'll see it in the high school line as well, need to be overhauled and enhanced. We have family consumer science labs in high schools that look like they did 40 years ago, and need to be updated, and they need to be adjusted to accommodate new curriculum and new curriculum delivery and technology. Even though we've invested in the technology in terms of projectors, we need more than that in those facilities. That's what these numbers do, to accommodate those needs, both at the middle school level and the high school level. So, that's elementary and middle. When you get to the high school, you'll notice the term concepts. We know that there's, we're not promoting an answer to high school growth. We know we have stress at our high schools. We took several measures at North Star the past year, and we believe the solution to high school growth is probably several solutions as well. We don't necessarily recommend a traditional high school, even though we believe between the Board and the community, there will likely be a discussion about this at some point in time in the future, and there will be multiple solutions to accommodate high school growth. We've talked many a times how we believe the best number for our high schools today is around 1,850 students. We know our core facilities will handle 2,000-plus students, and we know we have, I believe, three high schools today that are in excess of 2,000. So, we're starting to stress those, and the middle school population moving forward is gonna add population at the high schools. So, that stress is not gonna reduce itself in the next few years. So, this conversation is relevant, it's imminent, it's probably an assignment that, in a sense, we're throwing at you, that we don't have the answer to this question. We need help to resolve what that solution might be. The last item on there, oh, I apologize, I'm gonna stick with high schools a minute. We add it, we put focus programs. You can see there's no dollar amount. We put other, alternative schedules, e-learning. That goes along with that, multiple solutions. We think there's a combination of these items and then some that are gonna help us solve the high school population influx. And so, we're open to more suggestions and ideas from the Board on that. The last one under Tier Two is early childhood, and I mentioned earlier that we have early childhood at 29 facilities. We know there's all kinds of discussion out there about what that means, and what does that mean for LPS in terms of how we accommodate those programs. We need help there as well. You can see we don't have a solution, we don't have a dollar amount, but we know a discussion needs to take place about what our role is, how extensive our role is, and how we accommodate what we adopt as our interaction with early childhood, and how it's placed in our facilities. So, that's Tier Two. The majority of that is growth. If you take elementary, middle, and high school, and if you take a traditional high school, that's 240 million dollars. That's half of our number right there. So, we're really trying to accommodate growth. That's the real need in this plan. Any questions? I'm gonna go to Tier Three.
I'm gonna go ahead and let Lanny.
Okay, Scott, first, the question would be some information that we'll want going forward will be the enrollment projections broken down by the high school, middle school, and elementary school levels, so that we can get an idea of where, you know, our next 4,450 students will be falling within those categories. And then, the other thing I wanted to add is not a question, but a comment. I just wanted to reinforce- wanted to reinforce that this plan acknowledges that we're really at the beginning of this conversation as a board, particularly when you see the zero-dollar amounts there, that means there's not a solution being proposed, it's just a topic for discussion around the board, and I would add that we've actually already started that conversation with the community, as we've gone through our strategic planning process, one of the topics that comes up is, what should high school look like? So I think this is not gonna be a short conversation that we have with ourselves and with our community on the high schools, it will be a very lengthy conversation, but we have started it, and I think that's fantastic.
Thanks, Lanny. Don?
Do we have a way to estimate what a focus program might cost, or is that impossible without knowing what the programming might be?
I think we'd wanna have a little further discussion about capacity, two hundred kids, I mean, if it's comparable to what we have, what type of facility it would be, so we could probably get something fairly quickly, I'd hate to give you an answer now that wouldn't be forthright and as good as I'd like it to be.
And I understand, you'd probably need a little more guidance on parameters and things like that, but yeah, maybe that's something that you could get to me later, just kind of an idea.
Okay, and you'll know, we did list that under, we did not list that, but I know there were conversations in board discussions about focus programs at middle schools as well, or middle school level focus programs, and so that's not on this list, and it could be. Okay, go ahead.
You talked about some of the existing programs, high school, middle school, I just wanna make sure, as we were going through the strategic planning, I heard a lot from groups about interest in industrial technology, and making sure students still get exposed to that, and it's not just all centralized at their career academy, so when you're talking about these existing, you know, adjusting some of those programs, is that part of what you're wanting to do, or is proposed in this, is eliminating some of that space?
No, that's a good point, these special areas do accommodate more square footage, traditionally, because of the equipment and those types of things, we just wanna update those areas so we can accommodate changes in those programs, we're not looking at eliminating any of those, we, we do believe that they're healthy to have at both the middle school and high school level, whether it's just an introduction for students, and whether they even go to the career academy or not, we believe that they're relevant in those facilities.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for us to make sure that we're giving students that opportunity to expose that, I don't know about you guys, but my junior year, I took General Auto as an, you know, optional class, and it was a great experience for me, obviously didn't send me down that career path, but I wanna make sure all students get the chance to try it out.
Good point, thank you.
Okay, you go on, I think.
Okay, if we jump to tier three, tier three, you can see those are all listed as IAQ, indoor air quality, and I wanna tell the little story about the first four, Campbell Cavett-Maxie-Roper, those were the first geothermal projects that we did, those buildings opened in nineteen ninety-five, right below that is Scott and Lux, they opened in nineteen ninety-seven, they were both, all six of those projects were part of the same bond issue, it was a ninety-three bond issue. There was quite a discussion, even a debate with Lincoln Electric System, with the architects and engineers on those projects, to, they were really reluctant to go geothermal, and so the decision between the board and the design teams and LES was, well, let's build one prototype, the elementaries with geothermal, we'll build the middle schools with a traditional heating and cooling system, and it's been night and day difference in terms of utility, consumption, and cost to run those buildings per square foot, and so it's time, though, ninety-five, we're at two thousand sixteen, twenty-one years old, you know, we can sustain those, that equipment for another four, five, six, seven years, but it's time to update that, and we've positioned ourself well with geothermal, because an IAQ now will cost probably less than fifty percent the cost of the traditional IAQ, where we have to go in and gut the building and start from scratch, because we've positioned ourself, based on decisions we've made, the types of equipment, where we've placed it, that round two on IAQs will be much cheaper, and that's a tremendous savings, where we can cycle a building with updates at far less cost, and I think that is a huge pat on the back for decisions that were made a long time ago.
Very briefly, can you characterize the type of work that we're talking about with the IAQ, we're not talking about redigging wellfields, are we?
No, the wellfield has a fifty-plus-year lifespan, so we actually reuse, the wellfield stays intact, it's really replacing heat pumps and equipment in the building. Yep, good question.
Just a follow-up question on that, sometimes when we say IAQ, I think of human, which is being totally relocated for an IAQ right now.
Yes.
Is the level of these IAQ projects relocation type?
I could see that we could keep schools on site on around like this.
Okay.
Yep, I think there's a tremendous difference in the way that it's approached, it doesn't mean we wouldn't replace carpet and new paint and some of those kind of things, but the two main items would be mechanical equipment and lighting, and we would update the LED lighting, and both tremendous sustainable lead, green types of practices, those would be the two main things, along with disfinish upgrades.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Kathy? Do we have a backup plan in case a school grows that needs that IAQ, and we can't keep them on site?
I'm not embarrassed to say no.
Can we, can we at least evaluate if that might be a necessity down the road, so we kinda have our eyes open on it?
I think we're always watching for that and looking for that, if we knew that these projects were gonna be cued in and funded, we would have solutions for all those, so thank you, though. Other questions? So, tier three again, Cavett-Campbell-Maxie-Roper and Scott and Lux, it's time for an IAQ, and by the time we go through all the dialogue, updating the plan, I have no idea when a future bond issue could, or would, or might be, but we're a few years down the road for these actually being implemented, and by that time, you know, we're twenty-five, twenty-six years old on the equipment in these projects, so just FYI. The tier three, the last four projects include the four oldest high schools, Lincoln High, northeast, southeast, and east, and we did total IAQs on those projects in two thousand and six, and there was about a hundred million dollars spent on those four buildings, if you recall, they had additions, major overhauls to auditoriums, I mean, they were significant projects, each one was twenty to twenty-five, close to thirty million, however, all four of those buildings had additions and renovations that may have only been five years old in two thousand and six, and we didn't believe it was right to tear out mechanical equipment, electrical investments that were only five years old, and convert them to geothermal, and throw away five-year-old equipment, so there are parts and pieces of those buildings that we sustained the traditional system, even though it may some way be tied to the loop field, for the most part, they're kind of freestanding parts and pieces of the building. We need to go back and finish those projects at those buildings, that's why they're on here, and for instance, Lincoln High is really the south annex, that's the majority of the Lincoln High project, to give you an idea. Southeast had a science renovation, northeast had had, I believe, a media center wing, there were a couple of additions, there was a new gym down on the northwest corner, so there were additions that were fairly new, that it just didn't make sense to overhaul those at the time, so that's why they're on this plan. Any questions about tier three?
Annie?
So what's the worst thing that could happen if we don't do it, to an IAQ?
The worst thing that can happen, and I'll parallel it with your home, you know, if you have a furnace that's limping along, and you gotta call the maintenance person out once a month, or every three months to fix and repair it, 'cause something keeps breaking down, that's what we do, I mean, we have a maintenance staff that maintains our facilities, or if the roof leaks, and you have a bad roof, we patch the leaks and we, we go on, and so it just becomes more costly over time, the longer you wait, and don't get me wrong, I think our, our crews do an excellent job in maintaining our facilities, I mean, I'd put them up against anybody, and if you told us you have to make it last for forty years, we'll make it last for forty years, is that ideal? No, mechanical equipment, even heat pumps today are far more efficient than heat pumps twenty years ago, so updating saves money, and I hope that answers your question, but it's just gonna cost more on the maintenance side.
Thank you.
Okay.
Lanny?
Scott, you mentioned some of the projects from the two thousand and six bond, and as I recall, one of the goals of that bond was to reduce the number of portable classrooms that we used in the district, could you let us know, how many did we have at the peak of our use of portables, roughly, when did that occur, and what are we down to today?
In two thousand and six, when that bond issue passed, and there was a, an advisory group, who, one of their priorities was to eliminate or minimize portables, we had a hundred and seven portables at that time, and just to give you an idea on the high schools, I think we had eight at northeast, I think there were six or seven at southeast, all in the front yard, we had a hundred and seven portables, which equates to two hundred and fourteen classrooms throughout the district, I believe, and I copied you an email the other day, I think we're down to maybe seventeen, something like that, and a couple of those are serving human at the Bison Facility, we have five now at North Star, we have three at West Lincoln that'll go away when this addition opens up here in the next few months, so they're really minimal anymore, and that's a good thing, they're really, the purpose for portables is to accommodate bubbles in population, and I think that's the best practice use for them.
So do you think it's likely that between now and when we eventually do a bond issue in construction, based on a new ten-year plan, will our number of portables go up or down?
I think if we continue to grow, based on the pace of the last five years, there will be need for portables, between now and the passage of a bond issue, and the design of projects, and the implementation of projects, I think that will go up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Actually, I had a couple of questions about infrastructure back from tier two, should I ask those now, or should I wait?
You can ask any question, that's fine.
Okay, 'cause there's a couple of these projects that are, you know, similar to the cost of an IA, some of these IAQs, that I just wanted to ask about, one of them being traditionally playground equipment hasn't come out of this, has, has been paid for more by the local school, by, is that, am I remembering that correct?
Typically, parent-teacher, parent-teacher organizations have added to playground equipment, I think the last major investment by the district was in the early nineties.
Okay.
And it was a comprehensive investment at that point in time.
So what would this potential, I mean, three-point-seven million dollars, how, how do we see that?
Right now, we, the ninety-three investment by the district was to really accommodate Americans with Disability Act, ADA, at the time, we really didn't have a great investment in playground equipment, it was kind of sporadic, and it wasn't accessible, so we made a district-wide approach plan to do that, that equipment's now twenty-plus years old, and quite frankly, that equipment will last longer, it'll last twenty-five or thirty years, it's in good shape, we inspect it regularly and take good care of it, but there's old equipment out there that's very old, that probably needs to be removed, this would update all of that twenty-plus-year-old equipment with new structures on all the elementary sites, and we'd probably even split that into two structures, one for a lower elementary preschool through first or second grade, and a third through fifth grade-type structures, to accommodate different needs, different sizes of kids, on all of, all of our elementary schools, this would also put a rubber pad below all of those structures as well.
Another one that stands out to me is the, the line marked restrooms, the two-point-four million dollars almost there, there was, you know, as I look at this in light of schools and our recent history, and the current federal administration has issued some stuff related to restrooms, it makes some people in Lincoln uncomfortable, and so I'm just wondering what exactly these restroom renovations are that are, that are marked in here.
There's a number of buildings, and before I even answer the question, each one of these kind of subtopics has a list of schools that this number applies to, so this is just, it's not like there's not a plan behind each one of these, so restrooms probably has twenty-five buildings that we're dealing with.
Okay.
And the plan here is, we do have some sets of restrooms that are just old and outdated, we might have too much detail, men's urinals that are the floor urinals from the old days, that, that no longer meets code, so restrooms like that need to be overhauled, but we would be updating new tile, new flooring, new fixtures in pairs of restrooms throughout the district where they're quite old. This also accommodates special needs, we have students with special needs, where we need more private restrooms, it accommodates families where maybe you have a dad and a young daughter, or a mom and a young son, that need a special place, a restroom, in lieu of using the men's or the women, so to speak, so I think it allows us to accommodate all those needs in all of our buildings, and so this plan covers elementary, middle, and high schools.
Okay.
Before we go on to ask any more questions, did you wanna finish this sheet before we go on to this one, I think we're jumping ahead, aren't we?
We can, I'm good with any questions, but we can, do you have any more on those, Matt?
I think those are the main two, I, I see a couple of things on here that, I know we're not ratifying this or anything today, so, you know, just making sure that we're keeping our focus on educational spaces, on some of these, and I know we'll have some of those discussions, I guess in particular, I'm talking about the trash recycling enclosures, you know, that, that's just something that seems outside of classroom space, and so we'll keep our eyes on that.
We'll come back to that, and I'll go to tier four.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Tier four, and it's not the catch-all, and again, these aren't in a prioritized order, they're in alphabetical order, just so you know that, so you don't look at that list and say, well, this project's at the top, should it be first, they're in alphabetical order. There are lots of IAQs on here that, within the next ten years, they'll be twenty-five years old, that's the life cycle number that we plugged in, that's why they show up. There are program deficiency additions on here, and I say program loosely, it could be science room, it could be a multipurpose room expansion, it could be a gymnasium, it could be a fitness addition, there are a number of things like that that show up on here as additions and/or renovations, based on program deficiencies, and if you go back and look at those influential factors, that's why they're on here. We spend a lot of time looking at every building, as I mentioned earlier, and the one thing that this list could maybe be longer, if, if you were looking at it with a different set of eyes, saying, wow, look how we're growing, how come you don't have additions planned at fifteen buildings to accommodate growth, well, quite frankly, we believe that our buildings are really pretty well-sized as they are now, most of the buildings that we've taken care of in the last ten years, we don't wanna go back to Hartley, or McPhee, or Saratoga, or all those inner schools, and make them bigger and bigger, because now we start to stress the core facilities on all those projects and those buildings, we believe we've positioned them well, as a three-section, a four-section, or a six-section, whatever they are, to accommodate that neighborhood and that attendance area, doesn't mean we don't need to tweak some attendance areas a little bit, but we believe those schools are at the right size for the area that they're serving, and if you start putting a six-classroom addition at one of those schools that I mentioned, all of a sudden, the cafeteria's stressed, the library, media center's stressed, the computer lab is stressed, or, or the other support programs, so it's really on the fringes of our community, and growth is where the new additions and projects need to be, and if you remember the last bond issue, Norwood Park, Meadow Lane, Pershing, their attendance areas are all fingers that touch the edge of the city and the growth, and so we were looking at that as a temporary solution until we build that new northeast elementary school. So when we look through every building, you might wonder again, why this list isn't any longer, we believe the core buildings in our, in our district are really pretty well-set, other than keeping them maintained and up to date, so that's the philosophy behind why this list is as short as it is. There are a couple of support facility things in there, transportation, you'll see, parking, we believe a replacement facility for Yankee Hill is due, we did a new Cheryl facility, we opened Nuremberger this past year, so we've covered elementary and middle school, and we believe it's time to replace Yankee Hill with a high school facility, I think you'll see a district indoor-outdoor activities facility, and people might ask, well, what does that mean, and this is not a Seacrest Stadium Performance Arena, this is a practice facility for activities and athletics, and we believe in the next ten years, we don't think that that's out of line for a community in a district the size of Lincoln, there are small communities today building these types of facilities, and we look at what the day is like today outside, you could You could have baseball batting practice. You could have a marching band in this facility. You could have soccer. You could have football. You could have golf in a driving range net. I mean, there are a number of activities that could be supported in an indoor facility that we think is not out of the realm for Lincoln in the next ten years. And that's why we put it on the plan. You may say, no, not a good idea, but we put it there for discussion purposes and we think it would support a lot of programs. We, the district, support fifty-plus activities of our students after school annually. And so that's a lot of kids that participate and we think this would serve it well. Just for information on that, we also put, another one you might ask a question on is Lincoln East High School. It's the only one of the four older high schools that has a six-lane swimming pool. The other three, Northeast, Southeast and Lincoln High, all had smaller pools years ago. They've all been infilled and they've had a swimming pool addition in the last twenty-plus years. East High is the only one that has not. We put that on here because it kind of brings it to equity purposes. You may agree or you may not agree, but we put it on here because we believe it brings consistency to the high school programs. So that one, we did put a number on. It's a huge number, but it allows East High to accommodate swim meets more easily with an eight-lane pool. So again, I won't get into every one of these because we'll, we'll spend a lot of time on tier four, but any questions on four? I think I covered a couple of those that probably rise to the top. But if you have questions about others, I'd be happy to answer those and then I can jump to infrastructure.
Okay, Kathy?
I have a couple of questions. One is another request for information.
Okay.
As we look at these hotspots of current buildings, I like that grade by grade, like how many students are in each grade and each building, not just district-wide. It's great to know how many were growing across the district, but it's really difficult to see what that path is from kindergarten through fifth grade or for sixth, seventh and eighth. The second question I have is at the middle school level, where we're looking at a new middle school in northeast and in south Lincoln. But as I look at the numbers in northwest Lincoln, which is also our largest high school when you look at North Star, and the numbers don't tell me that it's getting any smaller out there. Goodrich at eight hundred and forty-one was six, went from six fifty-six to eight forty-one. I don't remember what the capacity of Goodrich is right now after the last project. Then you look at Park at eight ninety-two, it went from seven forty-seven, so that's a two-hundred student growth. And then you look at Scope, Scope, seven forty-four to eight thirty-five. I know it's only ninety kids, but those elementary growth with Kuzera, with Freedstrom, all of those buildings are going to have stress. How do we handle the kids, the growth in northwest Lincoln that I already see in the current numbers here, just based on what I've got in front of me?
That's a good question. I'm probably going to defer the answer to that tonight, but if you recall on the tour, we looked at three areas in northwest Lincoln that all had substantial growth. One was on the south end of Arnold Heights area as we approached from the interstate. One was out there to the west of Fallbrook where there's new development going on and one was over by Kuzer. And so all three of those areas, which are all very remote, are putting stress on northwest Lincoln. And so one building solution is not going to solve all of those areas. And so that's an area where we have to be determined, or it may not even be listed on the middle school side, what that solution is. I think we need additional effort there to figure out that plan.
So it is on your radar?
It is on our radar.
It's just not on this list.
But it's a good, it's an excellent question and it's a difficult one to answer.
I'm good for right now.
Anyone else? Matt?
I, just a comment or the question, I really appreciate how you set some of this stuff up by giving us the chance, bringing some of these conversations up so we can have them. For example, the high school program. I appreciate you not just defaulting and saying, we're just going to build what we've always built, but let's have a conversation about that. Early childhood, some of these athletics facilities, I really appreciate the way you've done that to give us the chance to listen to the community, be a part of that conversation and set how things may or may not be the same moving forward. I know through the strategic plan process, we all heard lots of different ideas, you know, smaller high schools, smaller elementary schools, different things like that that I, I feel like what you've presented us gives us the space to make those adjustments in, in those right areas. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Michaela Sparr. I also would like to see us go and explore what the costs would be for going and having evening classes at some of our high schools, to be able to go and expand the capacity of our evening highs, of our high schools. And also what the cost for expanding e-learning opportunities at high schools would be. And then you, you spoke about East and that eight-lane swimming pool and equity, but East remains our smallest high school. It's on a parcel of land that's quite large and would have the opportunity for expansion. I was wondering if that had been considered?
Well, I would say that we have looked at that. And I go back to the comment a little bit ago about, we believe that the infrastructure of our facilities is positioned well to accommodate eighteen fifty comfortably, two thousand stress, but doesn't mean we couldn't be there. I think East High may need additional classrooms to push that number over that two thousand hump, but I think our core facilities are such that they could support that number at East High. We'd have to go back and do a, a good classroom count, reevaluate that building to see if additional classroom space could be added. We've been real sensitive and I don't know if that's from listening to the board over the years, that we don't want a three thousand student high school or larger. I mean, I, I think the numbers we continue to talk about are comfortable numbers to you and our community. And so we're sensitive about overbuilding high school facilities so that we don't grow into a, just too big. So we can go back and look at East High. I will tell you also, just with the change of special ed populations at different buildings, that really has an impact on how many available classrooms there are for capacity counts and numbers. But, and we need to look at that at every building. We constantly monitor that. But we'll look at East High and see if there's the ability to add.
And then along with that is, in recent years, when we have built new elementaries, we've built them so that would be easy for us to take a four section into a two, another two section, a six section. And I, I realize that everybody wants their elementary school to remain small, but design standards being as they are, it seems like a couple of grades tend to be clustered together and this does not become problematic. But considering that, I agree with Mrs. Danic about northwest and not seeing a middle school there, that I think we need to have it discussed on whether or not we're going to go and take some elementary schools that are on our edge of the city, the perimeter, and add two sections to be able to find the kind of cost savings we need to be able to equitably serve all quarters, all quadrants of our city. So that's another suggestion I would like to see explored.
No, we'll do that. And just so you know, for reference purposes, because we talk about the northwest edge, Kuzer's a six-section building and Arnold is a six-section building. The others that may not be on the edge but are kind of out there, Freedstrom is a four-section building and West Lincoln is kind of a three, four section. Those aren't necessarily on the edge in terms of the attendance areas where they touch, but just so you kind of know, if you would expand Arnold and Kuzer, now you're going beyond six-section, which starts to look like Roper.
That wasn't what I was referencing. I was thinking about elementary schools more in the southern part of the city that have been recently constructed that are four-section.
Yes.
That maybe we wouldn't have to go and build an elementary school out there and that cost savings could then be shared with a different quadrant so that a different quadrant could go and have its middle school needs addressed. I would not suggest taking a six-section elementary school and turning it into an eight section. But I do think we have opportunities with some four-section schools.
That's correct. Wyssong and Cleffcorn were both built that way.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Kathy and then Lanny.
A couple of my ahas as I go over these numbers and the enrollment numbers are probably where I spend the majority of my time when we start talking about additions, is in the core of Lincoln, I see consistency. Over the last five years, buildings are holding their own within the core of the Lincoln. That's really a good thing for us, that the infrastructure across the, the district that we've added capacity and yet our, our schools that have been around for almost a hundred years are staying stable. That's really good for our community. The second thing is, is I do worry about overbuilding when we're close to schools that we just added on to and they're finally up to like three-section schools and now we're going to put a new school out there. And then what happens to those buildings? It seems like we sometimes create our own cycle. So I hope we reevaluate those numbers, that when we draw those attendance boundaries, that we make sure we don't decimate those neighborhoods. Because where we draw the lines, whether we like it or not, most people go to where you draw the lines. The majority of the people say, where's my school? Where's the line? They stay within those boundaries. So I would hope that the boundaries are a big part of the discussion. And the third aha is, it has to do with tech space and recapturing tech space. And most of that's probably in our middle and high school levels where we're now moving to a one-to-one with technology. We had computer labs that we should be able to recapture space in probably every middle school and every high school. I don't know what that space looks like or how much of it, but when you talked about the addition at northeast, a big section of that was computer labs. It was the media center and technology centers all on a three-level building on the south side of the building. So if that's something we can look at, and also what space can we recapture from technology?
In respect for time, you tell me where you want to be with that.
I'll let Lanny ask one more question, then maybe five minutes more, and then we'll have five minutes of questions and we're done quarter till.
And I don't need my answer today, I need it.
Just one of the things that I wanted to correct, Barbara, I'm not sure if you were referring to the capacity of East when you were meaning that it was our smallest high school, if you're talking about enrollment. But I just wanted to highlight that the enrollment at East High School in the last few years has, has grown significantly. It's no longer the smallest.
Right.
High school in enrollment. In fact, it's bigger than Southwest as of our last final, right account. It's, northeast is now the smallest high school followed by Southwest and then followed by East. So I think that's an area that we need to look at, potentially additions at East for classroom space because, again, it's right on that edge of town where that Stevens Creek development, as it continues down, the enrollments aren't going down.
Just a follow-up, I was talking about capacity.
Okay, I thought you probably were, thank you.
Okay, everyone's good? Dr. Standich?
I do want to make one financial note as we're looking at these charts. And if you would look at the tier one priorities funded, you would notice that there's project cost estimates and then there's a project cost that includes a midpoint of construction. So that section of the document takes into account the element of time. So it's saying that we're currently creating estimates for what the project would cost. We're forecasting out over the timeline that it's going to take for us to get the project completed and we're accounting for in, any increased costs we would anticipate. I want to just make a special note that the project cost estimates are current today project cost estimates and they are similar if you go across for the costs. So they don't have that midpoint of construction added. And I just want to point this out because when we look at the bottom of the four hundred and eighty-six, if we were to bring this exact same listing back at a date in the future and start to build midpoints on portions of it, that number would go up. So I didn't want that to catch anybody off guard, that this is the way this plan is structured. It's how it works, it's how it's worked well, it's how we've been able to manage projects. But I didn't want tonight to go by without us pointing out both to the board members of the community that that's how this plan in front of us is designed.
Scott, do you want to go on? I think we can make it for six, seven more minutes.
Okay. I'll jump over to infrastructure. These are probably going to be more kind of closing-type comments, but if you have questions, I want you to ask. The infrastructure document, as I mentioned, are kind of subtopics. There are probably five or six times as many topics that aren't even on this list that, as mentioned earlier, we believe we can accommodate annually within the operations maintenance budget and take care of issues like that. Ones that we believe kind of rose to the top that start to get fairly significant in terms of cost, restrooms, several hundred thousand dollars. We can't do that annually or it would be a fifteen-year program and it would take us a long time to implement and that's why they fell here. But I'm going to give you an idea or an example. Up there in the blue section where it says building envelope, again, that's a very high priority for us. A building envelope is windows, doors, roof, caulking and sealants, those types of things that if you have moisture infiltrating your building envelope, now that becomes mold and mildew and the other types of things that we don't like to battle. And so we spend a lot of time and effort doing preventive maintenance inspections on all of our buildings. One item that's on there, just as an, an example, is the second one. It says glass block clear story. If you've driven by Lincoln High School on the Beechner side and looked at Lincoln High, there's the old West Gym and the whole wall is entirely glass block and northeast has had it and southeast has had it. Glass block is not a very energy-efficient system. It allows natural light in, but it's just a couple of pieces of glass. And we're replacing things like that. And the buildings that are part of this list are Lincoln High, northeast, southeast, Holmes Elementary and the Distribution Center. So under this title, on our list, there are five buildings that that number impacts. You don't know all that today and we can get this information to you down the road. The one above it where it says building caulking and sealants, there's forty buildings on that list. So there's links to the spreadsheets that develop this number. It's just not like we pulled a number out of the air. There's a building and a breakdown of every building for each cost that's on here. These are just summaries, just so you know that. And at some point in time, you may want to know that to know how many buildings and projects you're touching across the city. If in fact, we were to say, let's move forward with that, or what does bleachers mean? Or what does HVAC controls and ventilation mean? We don't have time enough tonight to go through each of those, but we're more than happy to provide that information to you. The second thing, which is probably more of my closing comment and we'll entertain any questions and let you get out of here. This is a ten-year plan. It's hard for us to visualize even what's going to be happening in ten years. It's, it's hard to know what's going to happen in three to five years. But boards, just like yourself, made a decision to build Lincoln High, made a decision to build northeast, made a decision to build Campbell Cabot, Maxie, Roper and Scott and Lux. Those were decisions that were big decisions at the time, but the foresight was only a few years because it was hard to predict it. You know what? Lincoln High, a hundred-plus years later, still there. Lincoln Northeast, built in forty-one, I believe, opened up, still there. So the decisions we may, make to build new buildings aren't going to be there just for ten years. They're going to be there for fifty and sixty and seventy years. So sometimes we have to think, and it's hard for, even for us to do that, think beyond ten years because it's going to impact our kids for a lot longer than just the, the ten-year plan. So I hope you get your arms around that when you think about what some of these things mean because we aren't going to tear them down in ten years. They're going to be there for a long time. And we're, we're proud of the work we've done. We're, we really appreciate the support that you've had as a board and those even before you, and we really appreciate how our community has supported what we've done. But this is important stuff, but yet we think we've done a good job with it as a team and we hope to continue that effort. So if you have questions, we'll answer a few more, but we know you're tight for time too.
Uh, so, so we're, we're talking about all these things in the future. We've got them prioritized. I mean, I look at these tier two, three hundred and twenty-six million with some appreciation, maybe three fifty, three hundred and fifty million dollars. I mean, how, how quick are we talking about building these? I mean, is this something that we're talking about needing to build two years, three years? Or is it ten years? You know, what's the, what's the timeline potential look like on something like a tier two?
In the class, we've had a dual conversation that's occurred both in the planning committee and in the finance committee. And so the answer really is up to the board. And so the planning committee does the work of advancing needs. The finance committee does the funding study of what resources do we have to meet these needs. When those two groups come together, that's really the work of the board that then makes the decision of, here's the needs articulated, here's where we have the resources to match up and puts it potentially in front of the community. So we don't have a definitive answer to your question. That's actually the question that's in front of the board.
Right, right. So, I mean, just a timeline on that. So the finance committee then takes these. So, I mean, just a timeline on that, so the finance committee then takes these now and starts talking that through? When kind of would the finance committee begin looking at those, or have they already, maybe?
Well, last week, we issued our final 33 million of bonds. It was a very successful issue. I can do that little plug real quick.
Yeah, that was great.
And so that means we have the debt schedule built for that, that we can lay into the district debt schedule, and I think the finance committee, as a result of hearing these needs, would very likely say, let's look at our bond debt, let's look and see what the horizon looks like, and start to begin that conversation. So it has not started already. It definitely has been on the radar for years for the next, it hasn't started already, but I would imagine that Mrs. Danic, as chair of the finance committee, would say, well, we have some needs in front of us, let's start to talk about it.
That's it. Go ahead.
Kathy?
One of the things that the 10-year plan gives us is a look, not just forward, but a look back. And one of the aha moments for most of us, especially those who've been here a long time, is Lincoln is unique in that maintenance renovations, improvements, or investments in our existing buildings, but they're also generally rewarded by stability in those neighborhoods and stability in our community as a whole. I've gone over numbers for the last 20 years off and on, and just looked at, when we don't invest in a building, that's when the population drops down in that building. And yet you can look at Norwood Park, went from 182 to 250 kids. Doesn't sound like a lot, except that the building was kind of only built for one and a half sections of classrooms in there, and now it's a three-section school, and the school is growing. And I think those investments that we make stabilize our community. So this board is just carrying on a legacy of boards in the past that have really taken to heart that this district as a whole believes that we take care of what we have. We don't just go out and build new, and we don't build on the cheap, but we don't go extravagant. We build for stability and long-term infrastructure.
Don?
I just had a super quick response to Matt. I would have said, I think largely the same thing as what Liz was saying, although perhaps less articulately. Ultimately, the questions to your answer, and I'm sure that you're asking questions that people in the community are asking, but in terms of timing, what's going to be included, how we're going to pay for it, those things are up to us to determine. This is the beginning of a conversation. At this point, planning has done work, they're bringing to us their current understanding of our list of needs, and this is, you know, an ongoing process. But as we work towards potentially a future bond, this is something that's probably going to take several years. There are going to be other work sessions, there are going to be a lot of conversations, but we're nowhere close to saying, here's what the final list is going to be, here's how we're going to pay for it, and this is when it's going to happen. I think it's a fair question, I think we're quite a ways away from being able to answer those questions.
Yeah, and like you said, a question that we hear.
Mm-hmm.
And if I can just add, don't forget, too, that, you know, it's been the culture and history of LPS to bring in a superintendent's facility advisory committee that really helps as we get closer to, and we're years away to Don's point, in terms of dollars available, projects that are on the list. But, you know, kudos to us and to Scott and his team. It's so much better to be proactive in planning than to be in crisis management, and so many districts in America are in crisis management, unfortunately, because they can't keep up a lot of deferred maintenance, and we do a great job of that.
As a final thought on that, I wanted to echo the same thing, and I had a note to say that earlier, too. I remember back in the early 2000s when we went out and got the MGT study to do a comprehensive top-down look at every single building and determine a great list of what our needs were, and since then, we've been keeping very good data, to the point where, through the excellent work of our staff and through the work of our planning committee, you guys are able to bring us a very good, very comprehensive list of exactly what our needs are, and I think that that's something that we do well. Something that other districts not necessarily have done very well, to Annie's question earlier, you know, what happens if we don't do this? I think you see that in districts in California where buildings are falling apart, you see that in districts as close as Omaha where they have deferred these questions because they are expensive, and then they finally get to the point where they're ready to do something, and they realize that their to-do list, it's about a billion dollars. So something I think that LPS has always done very well is maintaining a good data, a good list of what our needs are, and then making sure that we keep up with those things so as, in the long run, to cost us the least amount of money possible.
Anyone else? Again, Scott, thank you to you and your team for coming this evening and everything you presented, and we are adjourned.